I know.
Jim, did you get your appointment today?
If you don't have to. You don't have to.
I hadn't heard what's coming.
He has the gentleman who's...
Well, I don't want to wait for him.
Oh, I bet that's...
It says here it's...
The guy with the briefcase.
I'd like to have everyone's attention, please. I'll call to order our regular meeting for July 23, 2013. Jill, if you would, please call a roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Moffett.
Here.
Mr. Pope.
Here.
On our agenda are two sets of minutes, minutes that we had prepared for us for review. One of the minutes from the regular trustees meeting dated July 9, 2013. Mike, or Ed, any changes or corrections?
No.
I have none.
Second were the minutes prepared from our trustee fire and semi-annual meeting dated July 10, 2013. I agree if you have any changes or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
Both sets of minutes will stand approved as prepared and presented for us. Public speaks. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk to us about tonight? If you do, you're going to have plenty of time. Forrest, why don't we start with you, if you don't mind?
Have you the sitting over here on the left? This is a very hurried thing tonight. This has to do with Roger Conley and Canton Air Sports out at my airport, which I sold him the property in its entirety. I think we completed the deal in February or March. And it has to do with the conditional zoning campground permit. I was down to see Mr. Cardinal and we discussed it. I discussed things with Linda Chain last night. And I'm still on a wee bit of a quandary. So I just want to present a wee bit of our side of it. And I certainly won't take up your time. Mr. Cardinal, you had referred me to an Article 8. I came back up here and I went ahead and purchased a new zoning book. Took it out, read it, made all kinds of things on it. Still didn't quite understand what's going on. Basically, Mr. Conley has applied for these permits. And we have an eight-page architectural drawing, which he had left behind his door out there. We can bring that in later. We feel that we're complying with everything, or he is. And I would just like to let you know that I wish when a citizen would come in to have something done, that there be a checklist. In other words, do this, do this, do this, do this. Mr. Conley, in his opinion, was told that he had to go to the Health Board. He went there. They said he had to come to Township Zoning. He went there. It's been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Personally, I think we're starting to resolve this matter. And I will sit down in a moment and continue with what we're doing. I've done some more reading, Linda. And I totally understand what you have said to us. I have it here. But there's two pages ahead of it that I thought were quite pertinent to what was going on. I would just like to see a much better format for when a citizen comes in and applies for something, that it gets done in a proper fashion. In other words, go to the county and do this. Go to the state and do that. Come back here with this. And have it written down. We had the same thing up at the city. You know, I've been away from the city now 19 years. And when a person would come in to do something, build something, I'm the one that developed the checklist. Prior to that, we never had anything. So I'd just like to see that done out here. And I think we're getting things going now. And hopefully, we'll have a wee bit of more time to get all this stuff worked out. And we're going to do it. Mr. Conley is with me here tonight only because we got shut down out there because of weather. And I hope nobody has their basement's foot like the mess we have out there. That's it. We're going to continue working with the attorney, working with Mrs. Chain. And we'll get this done. Basically, it's a conditional, a change of... Well, somebody can explain it, I guess, later on.
I'll be able to explain it.
Would you? Okay. And I'd like to hear it sometime to them. And I don't know if it calls for a special meeting or whatever. But there's been misunderstandings on both sides. And I guess I'm just sort of here as a mediator to get this thing done. We have a multimillion-dollar operation going out there. And it's going to get better in the future. So thank you for the other night. Thank you, Mr. Cardinal. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
And you want to ask you what you referred Mr. Barber to?
I referred Mr. Barber to the zoning manual. It said, "Your problem is you've never made application with the zoning board of appeals for a conditional use permit." Until that's done, there is nothing that anybody is going to do.
I would like to answer, Jim, from a zoning standpoint, Linda Chain, I sent to Township zoning inspector. Over a year ago, Mr. Conley and I discussed the fact that he had camping going on on his property without a conditional permit from the township. At that time, I went over all of the requirements for an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals and explained to him the cost of the Board of Zoning Appeals and what he would have to present to them to get his conditional zoning certificate. I referred him to Todd Iskani at the Stark County Health Department, who I spoke to today at great length. He spoke to Mr. Conley last July 12. They sent someone out. They told Mr. Conley he would have to have the EPA out to examine his septic system to see if it would accommodate a campground or not, or if he would have to put in a commercial. It's his responsibility to contact the EPA. In the fall, Roger Conley and I sat down and he assured me there would be no more camping because, until he got this settled. He told me at that time, which was last September, that he had applied to the State of Ohio for the required information, for the permit. Explained to me this spring that he needed some letters from me. And I said, "Fine." Came in the office and I said, "Tell me what the... Show me what the state sent back to you and what they're asking for so we can get those for you." Then he admitted that he had never applied to the state. He told me last October, September, that he had. He admitted this past June, this current June, that he had not applied to the state. Well, what the state wants is letters of approval from us, which we can't do. I explained to him if he applied to the Board of Zoning Appeals, did not have everything from the Health Board, we could not grant it, and it would be conditional, he would have to have those items. He chose to wait until he got those before spending the $250 to come before the board. As to the state, Mr. Conley has not applied to the state. I called him today and gave him the EPA number. Whether he called today, I don't know. But I gave him the direct number to call and repeated to him my conversation with Mr. Iskani. And he is willing to talk to the trustees if it becomes an issue. We can't do it. Mr. Conley has to do these things on his own. I've given him all the help I know how to give him. I've given him copies of things. I've given him written things. He's got to do it on his own. We can't do it for him.
Thank you.
This has been just back and forth and back and forth. I was not told by Todd Iskani that I had to contact the EPA. I thought he would do that. I told him I was prepared to upgrade my septic system. And that's all that Todd had talked to me about, was my septic system, my existing septic system. And I agreed to upgrade it, whatever the EPA wants. As far as my application to the state, I still don't have what I need to apply. Now, from what I understand, if I don't have everything, when I send it in, well, it's going to be cut back to me. And it will take even longer. So I need a letter from the Fire Department. I need approval from the County Health Department. And when I go there, they tell me I have to go to the state first. I need a letter from the Township approval before I even send this into the state. Now, that's how I read it. And all I need is those letters and I'll apply.
All right. Hold on just a second. Mike, do you have any questions?
Um, no. I mean, I'm just listening to all this and sorting this out.
Ed, anyone?
No.
Since you're here, I'll go ahead and get into this, all right? See if we can reach some type of accord or solution, or at least an understanding of what I'm talking about. We're not really talking about apples and oranges, but we're kind of talking about fruit and vegetables or something like that. We're on different planes, okay? The township's responsibility and authority is limited to zoning control. You're aware of that? Do you have at least a grasp on what that means? It's basically just land use, okay? Now, I've understood that this camping issue has been developing for X years, five years?
Seventeen years.
Well...
We've had campers there for 17 years.
And we'll get to that for a second. We'll deal with that. From a zoning perspective, you need to consider whether or not your belief is that camping, to some extent, or to whatever extent you want, is somehow authorized as a prior non-conforming use. I don't know, and I'm not advising you one way or the other. I just suspected that you might be taking that tack, that it was some type of non-conforming use. I don't know. Has he articulated that to you?
Never.
Okay.
We don't charge for camping. It's just for my staff members.
And I, of course, am familiar with the parcel question. I know you took off like five or six acres or something from the airport. The airport is in a rural residential?
Yes.
It's rural residential. Of course, the airport, because of its history, and Forrest could give us an idea of how far back the history goes. I'm sure it's... Is it all the way back to the 40s, Forrest?
1940s, September 9th.
Okay. So we're into the 40s. That's what I suspected. And that predates zoning, that airport... If I was a federal judge, I would take the phone and have her removed. But I'm not a federal judge.
The motion is me to turn them off when it can work for you.
But anyway. So the airport uses are a non-conforming use. Forrest knows that, and there's never going to complain about that or anything related to it. I have always taken the view that your jump operations, okay? Because I know you run a jump school or a jump operation, whatever the case may be. It is certainly relevant to, or has a nexus to, an airport operation. So I think we would all collectively agree with that. That's why that was a logical extension to the non-conforming airport use. So far, are we all on the same page?
Absolutely. And if I could add to that, the jumping out there, I started it in 1962. And the camping out there has been going on on the property since before that. And they were self-contained units. We've never had to have any problem with septic or anything like that. They dumped their gray water. They dumped their black water. That's it. That's over my side.
Right, I understand.
And that's handled. They're no longer there.
But I'm trying to just get to where we're at. And where we're at is nobody has any issue with regard to the jump operation.
Absolutely.
Continuing that operation on your parcel of property, Forrest even reinforces the fact that jumping was going on ancillary to the airport operation. So it's a perfectly logical extension of a non-conforming use. It's provided for in our zoning resolution. And perhaps more importantly, it's provided in the state law, that you allow for reasonable replacements or expansions of non-conforming uses, okay? Now, the question then becomes exactly what is that use and what is it confined to? This camping, and I'm speaking for myself, but I can probably articulate the position of the board, too. We are just peripherally aware with what the complaint is about the camping, okay? There was at one time six trailers, seven trailers? And we start then with the analysis that that type of operation, that camping, what appears to be to a general observer a camping operation, isn't permitted in a rural residential area, right?
Right.
We get that? Okay. So then we have to look at, is that camping somehow a logical extension or rationally related to extending the non-conforming use of having jumpers jump out of planes? That's where, again, speaking for myself and not intending to give you legal advice tonight, but that's where I think things start to fall apart. I don't think that's a reasonable extension of it. Because otherwise, you can take a reasonable extension of that to anything. People have to get there. So putting a gas station up would be... You know, they have to have gas for their car to get there. I mean, they have to eat, so having a restaurant there would be... I mean, that's where we just start to get a little bit far away. So I understood that the zoning department, Linda's role here, was to bring the property into conformity with our zoning plan. Has there only been one citation issued to you?
Finally. This year is the first one I've even issued.
So one citation was issued to you. And it was strictly for the operation of a campground in a rural residential district without a conditional use permit. I assume that camping is permitted as a conditional use in rural residential?
It was up until April 13th of this year, when we changed the regulations to the zoning commission.
We've been looking at these issues. And apparently, all we did in April was strip out some definitions, right?
Some uses, particular uses.
So really, without getting too far deep into the zoning weeds tonight, there's a question of whether an application would be grandfathered or subject to culling under the old provision. But since this notice says here that you... Your remedy would be to obtain a conditional use permit, that really is the only avenue that the law allows for anything to be done. Now, I don't know if that was explained to you. You're indicating it wasn't really explained to you too clearly. So again, since you're here, we're going to make sure there isn't any uncertainty when we all leave here. Linda does not have any authority to deviate from the book and the map herself. So she can't say, "Well, two trailers seems okay to me, and that's kind of like a mini camp or something, so I'm going to just approve it." She just can't do that. This board can't do that. Individual trustees can't do that. Legal advisor Ken Cardinal can't do that. The zoning commission can't do that. It's something that... It's an authority that rests exclusively with the Board of Zoning Appeals to issue a conditional use permit. This violation, by the way, was dated June 27. Did he appeal from this?
Yeah. Just the letter that I enclosed with that.
When was the letter dated? Is it sufficient to be an appeal or...
I didn't feel it was. It was just a request for me to allow...
And I know these things get a little bit technical. So I certainly don't mind you coming in here and asking questions. That's the only way you're going to find out what procedure to follow. But regardless of whether you appealed this decision or not, your remedy is to get an application form, and there is a form you can fill out, correct? For the request for a conditional use permit before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And in terms of a checklist or some detailed explanation of what you have to do, the application is fairly self-explanatory. It needs all pertinent information. And then it needs the addresses, preferably of the neighboring properties, because people will have to be notified about the request and such. And Linda, if he applies, if he were to do that permit or that application tomorrow, you're looking at a hearing in what?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days. And if you're saying that that's what you need, is to go through all that procedure before you do anything with the state, then obviously, that's where we're going to have to go. We're going to have to get you addressing this matter before the BZA as quickly as you can.
With the other statement, on the conditional use permit, to apply, to have it granted, you must have your approval from the Health Board.
That's just what I was going to say. If you build a house, you have to have a Board of Health...
That's for a certificate. That's not for a BZA. But a conditional permit has a list of items they have to comply with. And the one is from the Health Department, which in his case, he must get the EPA out there to tell him, can he use the existing system, or does he have to have a new system?
The plans that I submitted has a new septic, a new system.
It's a 10-page...
My existing septic is not to be used with the campground.
Then Roger, that's what you have to take to Todd Iskani and Ken and get their approval. I don't have anything to do with that side of it.
I'm willing to...
Have you approached anyone at the Health Department about a permit for the septic system? Have you handled that at all yet?
They came out and inspected my existing system and...
They did the phone test. They did the discharge and the dye. I was there.
Okay. And then they left you with what conclusion?
Well, they were driving out. They said it's okay. And they were driving out. They stopped and checked one more time and they said, "No," but failed.
You'd like to operate at least on something a little more than that. Some letter or something.
I don't know where that left me. They said the EPA would be contacting... Or they would be contacting me. That's the way I understood it.
Well, we don't want to have you in a catch-22 or a quandary where you can't proceed. So I don't want to leave here with the proposition being, hey, march off to the county or march off to the EPA and then come back to us. You'll go to them and they'll say you have to come here. So I don't want to deal with that, all right? We want to try and figure out the best procedure for you to utilize. I would have no... Let's see. I'm not speaking for the Board of Zoning Appeals. But I could conceptualize that the board could grant a conditional use permit that would have very clear conditions on it. And one of the conditions may be that before you ever operate campground in a lawful fashion, that you have a conforming septic system. Do you understand how that would work? And you understand how then if you didn't comply with that portion of the conditional use permit, if one was granted, that you'd been in violation and you'd have all sorts of other procedures coming your way? Which we want to try to avoid, right?
Jim, do I understand, he cannot legally continue to operate this until he's completed all these things?
Well, right now, you're standing with a violation from a lawfully appointed zoning inspector that hasn't been subject to an appeal. So Mike, that's rhetorical. Yeah, you're not permitted to operate the campground without a permit. Now, are we going to file in court tomorrow to enjoin you from operating the campground? I don't think we had that on our agenda. Maybe we will. I don't think that was on our agenda, too, as long as there's some reasonable way to resolve this and work towards something that's, you know, amount of...
Well, I will send you the application then.
No, that's not what he said, Roger. That's not what he said.
Unless you're talking about our application. You're talking about the application here? Okay. You should come in.
Could I, please, has this been read into the record? His letter of response to the violation?
I don't think anybody's read it.
Well, isn't it necessary that be done?
No.
Not here.
No.
I'm not sure what that would accomplish, but...
Well, he explains what he's done and that he's ready to send the application and so forth.
We're trying to get him on the right track so he can go step by step and be accomplished. Roger, I'd like you to clarify one thing. You said that the Health Department told you the septic passed, and then as they were driving out, they said it failed?
They stopped and looked at it one more time, the discharge end. And they came back and said, "No, we're getting colored up."
Okay.
The dye had worked its way through finally. They had waited more than two hours. No dye. They were driving out and they saw the dye.
Did you call the EPA today, Colonel? Did you call the EPA today, the number I gave?
No. No, I had a room full of people. And I'll do it first thing in the morning.
Jim, I'll be more than happy to give you the application tomorrow, but you fill it out the schedule of orders.
You understand that we're operating in good faith in response to what you're telling us, okay? Do we have that understanding? You're telling me that you need zoning approval before you can get state EPA?
Well, that's the way I read it. I may be wrong, but...
Well, I'm operating under that position. I don't want to put you in the position of going through the BZA operation, getting a conditional use permit potentially, that tells you this is subject to you obtaining EPA and any other approvals for operation of septic system, and then you not having the ability to conform. Because if you can't conform to that, your conditional use permit isn't going to be worth the paper it's written on. So you... You know, I'm glad that we're having the exchange, trying to give you an idea of where to go, how to conform. But ultimately, it's going to be your responsibility to follow the right procedure.
Well, I'm willing to follow it. I'm capable to.
I would suggest... Again, I'm not here to give you legal advice tonight, but I would suggest some practical things to do would be to start communicating in writing with others. Send something or get something from the EPA that says, "Once you have zoning approval, we'll process your application and tell you what you need to do to have a conforming septic operation." Or get the county involved in doing that or something. That way, you're not in a bind of going through the conditional use permit process and coming back here six months from now and saying, "Hey, I came in. I got zoning approval and I still can't do anything." I want you to do this in a way that starts it moving along for you. Our role, and I hope you understand at least that, you know, we have this obligation to bring properties into conformity. I didn't pass the zoning, but I've taken an oath to enforce the zoning. I have to. And here, in your instance, we have been pretty patient.
And I really, because his intention was, that's why I've continued to say, "Get your conditional zoning certificate." I didn't cut it off in April and say, "Whoops, you missed the deadline." I want to be fair about that side of it.
Technically, I think the last announcement from the Ohio Supreme Court is it's really an application that cuts off any amendments to a zoning rule being applicable. So Linda's saying, and I'm agreeing, that we'll still consider this under the old rules that you were looking at applying under, even though you technically hadn't. So now, having talked about that for darn near 27 or some odd minutes, do we have any idea of what we're doing when we leave here? That was a question.
What I'm doing when I leave here?
Yeah.
Well, tomorrow morning, I'm going to call the EPA.
Okay.
And take down the name of who you're talking to. What they said, do a confirming letter that says, "This is what we talked about. I'm going to go do my zoning approval now." Okay? So you have some sense of assurance there. And by the way, something like that would be reasonable evidence to submit to the BZA when you have a hearing, that you can show the board members, "Look, I'm serious about this. I've communicated with the Health Department or the EPA. Here's a letter confirming that as soon as I get this approval, I'll go off and do what I have to do."
Well, I think you need to straighten it out with the Board of Health, too. And I think that you should get a letter from them stating that if you get a conditional zoning permit, that they would have no problem with the septic system you're either proposing or that you have. Because I think that that could be...
He already has information that he needs to put into septics, one for the campground and one for his personal building. He already has that.
Deb's right. Whatever information like that that you can have from the Health Department, too, would be helpful for the BZA members in making a decision whether or not to grant you a conditional use permit. And we want this to be a meaningful exercise, not just to put you through the process, okay?
But didn't he say that one... On one side, they said it was all right, and on another, said it wasn't?
That was on the current system.
That's on the current system. I understand you have something planned, though, right? You have planned... Do you have plans for an improvement, an upgrade, different old system?
I paid an architect to draw up the plans for the campground, yeah.
So I think what he needs is something from the county that says, once you get your zoning approval, we'll examine your permit application and tell you what you need to do. Because ultimately, I'm gonna stress this a third time, you can't use a conditional use permit that says, one of the conditions is you get septic approval until you have septic approval. Fair enough, Roger?
Could I have one thing for two minutes?
You certainly can.
Insofar as the extension of this, understand, these people aren't coming out there to camp. They're from Pittsburgh, Erie, Pennsylvania, Medina, Ohio, Columbus, and Michigan. They come in there Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as instructors. We have nine of them, and they're bringing a lot of money into this community. They are there so that they have a place that they can just overnight, get back up in the morning and continue work, rather than throwing bunk beds into one of the rooms, which we should've done. They're staying in their own little units. And some of them can just convert to self-contained so quick. And there's three of them, I think, right now that are possibly gonna be using a septic system. So thank you so much for your time. In all my time in the township, I've never seen this Board consider, well, this Board is different than other Boards, consider a matter like this for this length of time. So I thank you very much. Let's continue.
Jim, can you put in the record, Lexington Township does not allow living in trailers or campers?
Well, I was automatically thinking of a whole bunch of terminologies I can.
I did for quite a while, and I'll continue.
Barlington School wants to accommodate temporary teachers. I'm not sure we're making permanent trailers all around schools for teachers to hang out.
We better never have an emergency, here we have to bring females. Never say never. I'm done. Well?
Leave that alone, or? What do you think? All right, let's move on. Go right ahead. We only have a half an hour.
Hi, I'm Dennis Vance II. I live on Greenbauer. Reason for me coming here this evening was to ask, on my behalf, concerns for my neighbors. In that area, there are three people in which they have life alerts. One of them is Mr. Wiles. The other one is Mrs. Crowe. And the other one is Ron Vance. With the concern of them closing the bridge for construction for 180 days, and the way that the railroad conducts themselves with closing off both railroad crossings, in what way do we have of getting any type of emergency medical, police, fire, if that would happen? Because it does happen quite often.
Hey Jim, can I interview one of the listeners? I had a contact at Norfolk that I've been trying to get an answer for. Just got an answer. Basically says that he, they're gonna put out a bulletin tomorrow. Basically that it starts on July 29th, until January 1st. They cannot block Greenbauer or Burden at the same time. One has to be open. And between those days for emergency vehicles, trains cannot stop. That will go out to all the conductors this week, so nothing will be blocked.
Okay, that's cool. I appreciate that. So it's just me having to take myself a different way for work for six months, that's all. But I can, I can deal with that.
They can, because it's emergency vehicles, and that's the only way of getting in, they can send out that bulletin to the conductors and tell them, you have to leave these, one of these open at all times for emergency vehicles since the other end is being closed.
Right. And, I mean, I was, I've lived where I'm at since 1997, and I was always under that that was something that always should've been done, because there were three consecutive, and they do close it clear into the Burger Hut. So when it would come before the second fire department was added, that that way, they could be able to get to that end of the township. But it's never been taken into consideration, and I know I had talked to Mike, what, two, three years ago, because my kids, where they weren't gonna drop them off from school, because they were working on one set of tracks and had the other set blocked.
Right.
Well, luckily enough, this guy was laid off at the time and didn't have a job, so I was able to go and get him, but had to go clear into the City of Alliance, come all the way back and around. So, under the circumstances of, if this would happen, which it possibly will happen, because that's kind of the way that I look at things, where are my kids gonna go after school if that happens?
I can't, I can't contact the bus garage until closer to school, because no one's there.
Because currently, I got a 45-minute drive to work, and I'm using my local fives.
But I'll let, I'll let her know, I have to let her know of any closings of streets or something, I'll let her know. I won't have an answer for that one closer to school, because no one's in the bus garage right now. But they might put something in, do another route, they're gonna have to, but put something in, but I won't know that until closer to August, and I can always give you a call and let you know.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I can, I can see what a concern that would be. And I had another call today from Jim Woods, same, same exact.
Right, and I mean, you know, his health isn't all that good itself, so.
You got the answer, that's what we needed.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I'm sure the chief has that bulletin, I'm sure that he's sure.
Yeah, I kinda just had that just tonight, so I will let everyone know.
That'll be good, thank you. Next, anybody? All right. Where were we?
We're starting on a road here.
Go right ahead.
All right. We had talked about chip and seal on the driveway and the parking lot at Station 2. I had talked to the owner of half of the driveway down there, and he's agreed to contribute to that. I think we oughta go ahead and do it. You were gonna dig out, we got one bad hole, you were gonna dig that hole out and straighten it up.
Soft spot.
Soft spot. I think we should, well, go ahead and chip and seal that.
Is this covered just the front or is it back around at all?
To the back of the building, that's right. Not all the way around, just to the back of the building.
That recycling center there, I don't know whether any of you have been at the recycling center, but it's becoming more popular all the time. You can't hardly drive by it.
It's quite a bit of use. I think the chief's in favor of the chip and seal, so.
Now, what was the cost on that?
In your folder, actually. They're gonna do it after, yeah, after that donation, we'll need $3,050 for materials.
I think, I'll make a motion that we approve the $3,050 for chip and seal at the parking lot at Station 2.
Second?
Yes.
And I'll get the, I'll get the check for Scott Miller for his part of it.
Very good.
You have anything else? Can we start paving?
I'm still waiting on a call.
We're trying to get it, you know, the way, with the years slipping by, I hate to see him come out in cold weather, so. Mike's been trying to pressure him to get out, to give us a date to start the chip and seal on the paving program. And he's called him a half dozen times and.
Chip and seal, we're looking at the third week in August there to get started on that.
He has that, they have a date on that, and paving, maybe next week or so, so we'll see. Mike, do you have anything?
No, I did call the ODOT about the, you know, we had some complaints about the Boy Shawn McCalvin, 619, and I did call and talk to engineer ODOT, and he's gonna take a look at that.
All right.
So, I don't have anything.
All right, thanks a lot, Mike. Thank you, Mike, thanks. All right, Mike, will handle the fire department items?
Chief's not here, so I've got a couple items. Make a motion to reimburse Jamie Rayburn an amount of $43.78 for office supplies, ribbon and cartridge for the badge printer.
Second?
And I'll make a, let's see, a motion to approve payment to Hill's Heating and Cooling in the amount of $153 for a service call out at Station 2. The coil had to be replaced, and it was covered in a warranty, but I guess that's a labor.
Second?
And that's all we have on fire. And that's, you know, what, you have something?
I have nothing.
All right. Linda, what about zoning? Is it, we haven't talked about zoning?
Yeah, we're trying to know.
Are there any of these of particular interest to me?
Just a couple you may not have in there. One is the case of 14340 Gaskell Drive, had a gentleman running an auto repair in a garage there at the corner of Clinger and Gaskell. I gave him a violation notice, he came in, spoke to me, he has since closed down and is looking for a building in which to move his operation, and said, apologized, said I probably tried to get away with it longer than I should've. But he's under, you know, knows now, and I've checked daily, and it's not doing anything down there.
Do you have an update on the Beeson?
Yes, I do. The gentleman locked me in all of the auto registrations for the cars that are out there, current registration forms, and he's probably gotten rid of 15% of the junk. Is about all so far, and he is working at it. I don't think that he's doing it as fast as I'd like, but he did get rid of a couple of the junk cars and all the ones there. He can start up, and he can drive them, so, you know, and they have current licenses on them. And he brought me a copy of all the registrations. But I told him, we can't go past the next 30 days to have everything gone, you know, like, all the junk has got to be gone.
What about the philosophy on that one?
We're gonna have to take legal action on that. There's, I sent her another letter, and there has not been any improvement. July 2nd, I sent it. And I thanked the woman out on Freshley for getting rid of the majority of her junk. She still has one truck in the weeds, and she said she'll probably have that out by, next to the church on Freshley. Yeah. And if you'll go by, you'll see that's a definite improvement. I just sent a letter out to the woman on Abbey, who has her perpetual yard sale back in effect, and sent her a copy of our resolution that says you can only have a garage sale 10 days in any 90-day period. And she's gonna have to take that down. She had it really down quite a bit, but I guess spring got her back in the mood. And we have a house at 11070 Webb. People are living in the house without utilities. The sheriff did go over and check. The health department is checking on it. They're running an electrical course from the house next door. Nobody has. So the best we can figure, they're nice people, but they're, they claim to have had some type of an agreement to buy it from the son of the deceased woman, but there's $128,000 lien from Human Services on a house that's probably worth five. So I suggested that if they were interested in the house, they go up and bring it up for tax sale, and then, because her husband works at Tax Line's Castings, I suggested they go over, since it's three years behind in taxes, bring it up for tax sale, go up and talk to the city about the back bill and see if they can get the water and sewer moved up. So that's where we are with that one, and she's trying.
It looks like a number of these items are fairly routine, and you've handled them yourself, notices, et cetera. If I were to ask you to prioritize the two biggest problems from a zoning perspective, setting aside any airport issue?
Okay, Beeson and Greenbauer.
Beeson and Greenbauer. I think you would agree, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
The only predicament I have with Beeson, and it's that this is the end of July, and we're still talking about it.
Right, and that's why I was ready to go on the Greenbauer, when Beeson, he, I've been out there every couple of weeks, every week or so, and I know he's moving a lot of stuff around, but he has gotten rid of a lot of stuff, so I may be willing to give him to our next meeting, and if he's not have a, you know.
Well, only because you are willing to do that, I will hold off on this resolution that I already have drafted to declare a nuisance.
Okay.
Okay, because I am still convinced from personal observation that a lot of the junk is being moved around. Now, maybe it's being thinned out as it's being moved around.
Yeah, a lot of the plastic junk, the paper junk, and, you know, and I don't know whether he's going to finish the rest or not, but.
Well, we're probably in, part of the predicament is, some people don't perceive that a bunch of crap out in their yard is junk. They just don't see it that way. They think that, what, that's 150 bicycles? Doesn't everybody have 150 bicycles in their yard? 600 different abandoned wheels, and few old buckets? What the heck, throw a few sinks in?
We just, we don't want to get too late.
Well, I'm gonna say, I would like to wait till the first meeting in August to declare him a nuisance. Greenbauer, I'd like to go with now, and also, you have a nuisance.
Do you have a form on this one? Because I prepared this one with the Beeson.
No, but I can. They're in Jamie's computer.
I could scratch out.
Could you? I don't care, that's fine. And I have one, a mowing one, that we mailed it out, it returned, nothing, they wouldn't sign for it, they won't do anything, and it's 11353 Walnut. And it's got to be mowed, or weed whacked, or something, because it just, you can't even see the house. The rest are out there on Walnut, all mowed.
Which one is it, is on there?
Yeah, knife, no, next to the last one.
11535?
Yes. He lives next door, you think you wanna do it.
Do you have a Greenbauer personal number, I think?
No, because I just have the mowing in here. Hold on, maybe I have it.
Yeah, let's just do that.
All right.
Linda, just for purposes of our record, I know we've all been by it, but just give us an idea of the condition, that 13063 Greenbauer.
The driveway, the lot on the east side, is just stacked with tables and junk and tarps over them. At one time, these people, I think, did flea markets and all, and the husband passed away a couple of years ago, and I just think she's overwhelmed, and isn't getting, she was hoping to get help from the family, but there's been no, no change in it in the last 60 days. No.
They have a garage stuffed full, you couldn't even get a egg carton in it. And that doesn't count as cleaning it up.
Well, I didn't go in the garage, I'm only going by what's outside.
No, you don't have to go in the garage, the doors are not closed.
I'm just dealing with what's outside that, you know, makes it a nuisance.
Bye.
Just gonna pick some three-size dumpsters.
And you have heard anything in response to your July 2 weather?
No, nothing at all. I got a response to the first letter I sent, she said she was gonna have it cleaned up and by the end of June, or at least appreciably done, but nothing changed, so I sent that letter on the second, and had no results. changed, so I sent that letter on the second. I had no response.
The letter indicated they wanted it cleaned up by August. If we act on it tonight, we won't get there until next meeting at the earliest end, we proceed with cleaning. Let's just get it on. Get this one on the record. All right. Any questions, Mike?
No.
Information has come before the Board of Trustees regarding the condition of the real property at 13063 Greenbauer within the unincorporated territory of Lexington Township. Based upon the information the Board has, the Board finds that a condition constituting a nuisance exists on the premises identified above caused by the condition of junk and debris at the location. So I'll move, and it will be resolved by the trustees that pursuant to revise Code 505.87. Notice shall be provided by U.S. Certified Mail to the owners of record as well as any lien holders of 13063 Greenbauer, that in order to abate, control, or remove, the refuse and other debris.
Second.
And it's basically discarded debris, right?
Yes.
That's been determined to be a nuisance, and otherwise it'll provide in the notice as well as in this resolution that if it's not done within seven days, the Board may proceed with the abatement, and the expense of performing the abatement will be a lien on the property. And you know, Linda, under the current version of the code, which I'll give you here, if you can't get certified mail service, you're authorized to either post or give publication. Okay?
Last couple I posted personally and a decent response, so...
Second, yeah.
With that one moving, you can fill in that parcel number when you do the mailing. And there's the code for it. Now, here's what I'd like for you to do on this one, on Beeson. We're gonna go above and beyond the protocol of any due process. Just send them a letter telling them that at the next meeting, the Board plans to act on the resolution declaring a debris nuisance. They're welcome to attend the meeting if they want to explain it or give in any details about it, but unless we see significant improvement, the Board expects to act on that motion. Just something like that. Is that fair?
Fair enough.
Otherwise, there's one other complaint to add in our book here. It's for some junk
I was out past Mrs. Washington's, like, a week ago. There was one car, one boat.
She called today.
Yeah, I know she called today because I got the note, but I wasn't back out today to see if something else is. The garage is not in good shape. I had called the building department, asked them to look at it, because I can't declare the building unsafe.
Not even the chief or...
Right, chief of the building department, and usually George from the building department will come out. And I did call him and ask him to look at it. So, and the last thing that we decided on that was if we wanted to tell Mrs., have Mrs. Washington, I mean, Mrs. Mays, Isaiah Mays, notify them that since there is no dwelling there, it can't be used as a parking lot. And I did notify that, but we might have to go further than just a letter to them.
I'm not surprised.
They're mowing it, though. It's not like they're letting it get out of hand. I mean, it's mowed, trimmed.
Remember, our message tonight is prioritization, right? We're gonna get Beeson off the plate next meeting. We're getting Greenbauer going. There are two junk cars that 10781 hated you. So if you want to send a notice out there, again, it's a property, too, that somebody mows and apparently tends to, but there are junk cars sitting out there that people are complaining about. So we'll start with the notice that will be ignored, and then we'll go on to the nuisance procedure.
Oh, yeah, I had this one up.
I'm a little skeptical, huh?
You know, I think you're right on with that. And then the Kyle knife property at
Walnut.
Yeah, we didn't get a notice prepared for you today because the letter just came back unclaimed today.
No, that's a...
Yeah, it's actually...
Oh, it is? You did get it done? Thank you. She's so far ahead of me. I don't know what to do.
That's the only one we haven't acted on?
Yes, that's the only one we haven't acted on, and we really, thanks, Jamie. It wasn't in my file, so I'm okay.
Want to take on one more of these?
Well, all right.
I like that. This is just a tall grass deal?
Yeah, right up that, right past the seventh-story windows.
Probably qualifies as a nuisance based upon vegetation or high grass.
Yeah.
All right, well, the condition at 11535, we have enough information to indicate that the maintenance of that property in favor of moing is a nuisance, consistent with 505.87, so I'll move that we declare it a nuisance in order for the notice to be given to the property owners and lien holders, that if they don't clean it up within seven days, the Board may act, and any cost be assessed against the property.
Second.
Yes.
You haven't heard anything from the county on their magical program, have you, abandoned houses? I just thought you needed a great smile, but it's...
No, but, you know, Mahoning County is well ahead of us.
Are they?
All right, can. Mahoning's acting on those properties officially. So I don't know if Stark is waiting to see how that one works, pattern it or something, but, I don't know.
One thing the City of Youngstown is doing, for any lien holders, any property that they declare a nuisance for mowing, they're making the banks put up a fifty, uh, ten-thousand-dollar bond or cash to cover any mowing expenses if they don't do it. Do we have any kind of way to do that? I didn't think, didn't think we were that lucky.
We're lucky we have 505.87, and that's all we got. And no matter how strong the Ohio Township Association lobby is, they will never have the powers of cities, so...
Yeah, I know.
And some of us really don't even want all that power, so... All right.
I would like to make one comment, and hopefully, John, you'll get this into the article. We have people getting agricultural farm animals in our one, our two, and our three residential districts. And before you buy anything, call zoning and see if you can have it on your property, because I just evicted a horse from an R3.
I'm just disappointed you didn't call us to attend that eviction.
A fifty-foot lot. It's got a horse and two goats. She's trying to find a home for the goats. But call before you buy something to see if you can have it in your district.
All right.
Well, you get a good deal of the goats.
We're gonna move right along to item two on the zoning department's agenda. I'll move that we reimburse Linda sixty dollars and forty-two cents for food and supplies for the zoning inspector's mutual assistance meeting at Greenbauer.
Yes.
What a nice turnout. Bob Aiken gave us a little talk on actual survey versus the GIS, because we're all having problems with people looking at the auditor's website and looking at the lines and saying, gee, his barn is on my property, or I own more than I thought. But that's not the actual, that's just an overlay. It's not the actual lines. So you have to tell them, you know, you have to have an actual survey. If you don't know what it is, you can't go by those overlays to claim.
And I think the GIS has an overlay for zoning as well, and that's the same predicament. Just because it may say zoning class on a GIS overlay, the official zoning class is the national one.
Yeah, so this is a very nice meeting point.
I enjoyed, I went out, and I kind of... I enjoyed, I went out and I...